Mr. Grasso will lead the invocation.
In the name of the Father, and Son, and Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, once again, we're asked to do the work of the people. Please help us do the best we can. Amen.
Amen.
And Andrew, you, Mr. Pruski here has Boy Scout troop from Millersville.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask the Boy Scout troop 804 from Millersville to come forward. They're going to do our Pledge of Allegiance. They're here working on their citizen merit badge, and we certainly want to welcome them and have them participate in the meeting. You guys can actually face this way. Flag's over here. And whenever you're ready to go, Pledge of Allegiance, ready?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's always an honor to be with the Boy Scouts, and it's an honor to sit next to an Eagle Scout. Mr. Pruski is an Eagle Scout. Madam Chairman, excuse me.
Yes.
Madam Secretary, would you please read the ethics statement?
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included on the printed agenda, and your remarks will please be limited to two minutes. Will the following persons please come up to the table and take a seat? I have Mr. Robert E. Smith and Laura Kelman. Come on down, sir. Thank you for being here tonight. Give us your name and address, please, in two minutes.
So, Robert E. Smith, 1487, Chatham Court, Crofton, Maryland. So, hello, members of the council again. I'm here tonight, basically, I returned tonight, to basically address you again about the concern with having Councilman Peruca serve as the Chair of this council. Tonight, I'm actually here, not just representing myself, but actually as a representative for the Anne Arundel Green Party, which represents close to about 900 registered voters here in Anne Arundel County. As our key values outlined, social justice, nonviolence, and respect for diversities are of key importance to our members. And so that's, again, why I've returned here tonight. I believe with, and I'm not going to go over again with all the associations that, I believe they've been publicly discussed, both here and in the media, that Mr. Peruca's past associations have had, but whether intended or not, they do reflect a projection of what this county is and what it will tolerate. And this is, so, on that point alone, I feel that the council needs to take that into consideration. We do not, we need to be viewed, well, correctly viewed as an inclusive community of which we are, a community of which we are. And I believe when we have an individual that has these association and actually projects something very different, and actually I feel, being now that this is the third meeting that you will be conducting with such an individual heading the council, that it does on each your part, whether, again, intended or not, project a tolerance of those views, which I don't think is reflective of many view that I know that are on here or this county in general. So, again, I know it's within your power as the council at any point to introduce a resolution or call a vote to ask another individual to serve as the Chair. I would feel this is probably an apt thing to do. I feel serves, will serve as a continuing distraction for the county and also call into question when certain bills come up with certain issues in place. Also, as I said before, it's very important for members, as they come, they feel that they're included, and having an individual with these associations serving as a Chair doesn't promote that. So, again, I would ask you, as the council, to...
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you for coming down tonight. Appreciate your comments. Ms. Kelman.
Yes, thank you. I live in Cape St. Clair. My name is Laura Kelman. I'm showing up again because after all the concerns raised by citizens in these chambers about the associations for our county by having Councilman Peruca serve as Chair, the council has proceeded to conduct two meetings, maybe three, since with no effort to address them, even though it has the power to call a vote for another to serve in this role. Are we to infer, as citizens, that each member of this council is comfortable with those associations as well as a continuing distraction from other business before this body? I speak directly to our council when I say I'm sure you can feel the power and determination of the people who have spoken regarding this point. To Mr. Peruca, you believe you should run every vote through your religious laws? Please. You think supporting the likes of Kim Davis and Roy Moore is a good idea? Please. I think at this point, your future on this council is irrelevant. I speak now to the other Republicans on this council. Are you really happy with your vote to name Mr. Peruca as Chair? Are you really happy with your vote to name, Mr., excuse me, with your vote, you have aligned yourself with his ideas, his racism, his homophobia? Was voting him in as Chair a wise move? A wise move in front of your family and your friends? A wise move for your reputation and your standing in your community? A wise move for your political futures? See and hear us. We've been speaking here, meeting after meeting after meeting. We want to change toward our progressive values.
Thank you, Ms. Kelman. Appreciate your comments. Appreciate you coming down.
We will change this council.
Ms. Kelman, please. Thank you very much. Is there, is there anyone else who did not sign up and wishes to speak? Please come up to the table and state your name and address for the record. Good evening, Pastor.
Good evening.
Thank you. David Whitney of Cape St. Clair as well. And I want you to all know, as council members, that what you heard tonight does not represent people I know who voted for Michael Peruca to be our representative in the 5th district. Each one of you was elected by your district. The voters have spoken, and you lawfully elected him as the Chairman, so let's uphold the rule of law. This is not a place where politics is supposed to be taking place, but rather the business of the county. Thank you so much for your service to our county.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Seeing the movement, we'll move along. Is there any, any council member would like to place on the agenda? May I have a motion for the partial reading of any bill, resolution, or amendments?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of January 2nd, 2018.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Michael Peruca at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Smith, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 2nd, 2018?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second, did I get a second in there?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes of January 2nd, 2018 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 218, An Ordnance Concerning Legislative Branch Compensation. Bill Number 318, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Limited Distilleries and Distilleries. Bill Number 418, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Accessory Structures Lot Merge.
Thank you, and there's no resolutions. Due to outside counsel here this evening, may I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Bill Number 9517 as amended out of order?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Have a second.
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Bill Number 9517 out of order is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9517 as amended.
Bill Number 9517 is amended, An Ordnance Concerning Anne Arundel County Employee Retirement ... Excuse me, Retirement Savings Plan.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick, Administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office with me at the table, Lori Blair Klosmeyer, attorney of law, Barry Downey, outside counsel, Indy Fulton Rhodes from personnel, and John Hammond, Budget Officer. As you remember, this is our legislation. It creates an optional 401A plan for county employees. We will be offering amendment at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Is there, are there any questions at this point? Okay, thank you very much. We will now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Do we have a sign up for this? Seeing no sign up and no movement in the audience, well, I'm sorry. We have a sign up, excuse me.
9217 goes first.
No, 95.
All right, no. This was one of those rare occasions when I was right and Madam Secretary was not correct. So, we have no one, no movement, so we'll close, we'll hereby close the hearing on Bill Number 9517 as amended. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 9517 as amended.
Bill Number 9517 is amended, An Ordnance Concerning Anne Arundel County Employee Retirement Savings Plan.
Is there any discussion? There are amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 7.
Amendment Number 7. This amendment changes the date exempt employees and elected officials are eligible to transfer from the employee's retirement plan to the employee's retirement savings plan from July 1, 2018 to December 3, 2018, and makes corresponding changes to the dates of valuation of the elected official's accrued benefits under the employee's retirement plan.
I'm sorry. I was just catching up.
Move to adopt, Mr. Chair.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, this amendment is to ensure that all elected officials in the county and all appointed officials can actually begin this plan in December rather than July. This is to avoid any potential conflict with elected officials changing their benefits during their term, which you are not allowed to do. So this would ensure that those appointed and elected officials would begin December 3rd of 2018 rather than July 1st. So we'd ask for your support of that.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chair.
Any comments? Mr. Walker?
Thank you. Question for you. So, because of the way this is originally drafted, it would only apply to council members that are in their first term. Correct? Just want to make sure I'm going down the right path. The bill as it's currently drafted wouldn't impact members that are in their second term like myself.
As drafted, it would, which is why this provision is necessary, so that you can't change your benefits during your term.
Ms. Dickinson?
What he's referring to is that this would allow nonvested persons who are in the employment plan that were hired on or after December 1st, 2014. That's the new, newer council members. Those in their second term were here before that date, and so therefore are not a part of this option at all.
Correct.
It would have been vested at five years.
Right.
And they've already hit the five-year point. So this bill doesn't affect them in any way, either as written or as you're proposing in the amendment.
Correct. I'm sorry.
That's what I was just trying to play.
I misunderstood the question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I thought that was the case. I just want to make sure we're already vested in the previous plan.
Correct.
So, that is, so that said, so, let's assume, and I'm asking, I mean, nobody asked me to ask this, but I'm just trying to think out of the people here that are in their first term, then they're not, they wouldn't be allowed to switch over until after their second term started?
Correct.
So what happens in the interim between their, let's say that they don't, aren't successful in their election and don't get reelected to a second term?
They would have their, they would have their existing pension plan.
They wouldn't even have that.
They're not vested. They wouldn't even have that.
Because they're not vested?
But you would get them, I'm sorry, you would get your investment plus your interest back, as anyone who's not vested gets back.
Got it. Okay. I mean, it doesn't affect me. I was just curious about the mechanics of it.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, this is...
If I remember, it was yours truly's legislation, and we took vested from Anne Arundel County from five years to eight years. Is that right, Ms. Tate?
It's 10.
Or is it 10, was it? Did I pass so that people in office wouldn't get a retirement benefit for serving for two, for two things? Was it, was it 10 or was it 8?
It's 10 for you.
Okay.
And...
And it was 8 for everybody else?
No. It's 8 for elected.
Let's, I'm sorry. Ms. Blair?
Yeah, it's 8 for elected after that December, July 1st of 2015.
No, it's 10 for elected officials.
And it's 8.
Would you begin again? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. For elected officials, there is an eight-year vesting. For exempt employees, there is an eight-year vesting. It's a 10-year vesting for merit employees.
Okay. And we took it from originally from five years, correct?
From five, yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. You can all thank John Groser for that.
Oh, thank you.
Excuse me?
Ms. Dickinson?
Didn't that, didn't the council change it so that they would not vest until 10 years?
Right.
Which the council members were then out of that eight-year?
Yes. The elected officials are 10. Exempt are 8.
But they're elected, the council is elected, and they are 10.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Andy, would you, would you mind answering that question in the microphone? Because I'm not sure.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
For elected officials, their vesting is 10 years. For exempt employees, their vesting is eight years. And for merit employees, their vesting is 10 years.
All right. We all satisfied?
That's right.
Any other, any other questions or any other comments or thoughts?
No.
No further discussion? Then, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 7.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number 7 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would you please read Amendment Number 8?
Amendment Number 8. This amendment adds a procurement provision for the selection of a company to manage investment of employee retirement funds in the employee retirement savings plan.
Thank you. Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mr. Walker?
Since this is my amendment, Mr. Pruski's co-sponsor with me. We had this discussion last time about whether or not this should be, this plan should be set up in such a way that the personnel officer decides who the vendor is. And I know from my own personal experience with the company that I work for, we just changed providers in the last year because of better rates, and it was a fairly new program. So I just, in my opinion, and, you know, the council can weigh in however they want based on their votes, but from my perspective, I just think it'd be better off if this was a competitive sealed bid process instead of a single employee making a decision about how the system, what direction the system goes in. So. I don't know if Mr. Pruski had anything to add?
Mr. Pruski?
Yep. Took the words right out of my mouth.
Anybody else? Any other thoughts? Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, we don't think this is necessary, but if you council wants to add it into the bill, they can add it into the bill.
So that's a no position.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Any other thoughts? Mr. Fink?
The, right now, who, you know, who, how are we, how are we picking our investments right now? Is it going through a bid process or is the personnel officer?
No. When we first got T-Roe Price, we went out on bid for T-Roe Price. We've had them administering the 457 from that time on.
So this amendment is just, is codifying the process that we're currently using with other investments?
Other than the 10 years, I don't think we have. Does the 10 years exist today in the procurement?
Not as far as I know.
No.
But we did bid.
We did bid. The original, yes.
Thank you.
Can I just, may I ask the sponsor, the sponsors? Could you just speak for a second about, and I know we had discussion about this before, but just from my memory, the problem, what is the problem that we're seeking to solve here?
I mean, I don't know if there's a problem necessarily. Just a matter of opinion as to whether or not we should have a county employee deciding which investment firm has chosen to manage county employees' assets, or whether that's shipped out through a competitive bid process.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Fink?
And what, I know before we talked, when we looked at the, we looked at doing some work on the titles back in the code, what's the cost of something like this? What's the cost of these bids? I remember there was a cost of, you know, the smaller projects with a low cost, and you get into these larger bids, and the cost got a lot more expensive for the county. I thought that was some, some issues that we discussed, you know, last year when we were working on the, on the charter.
I don't have that information, Councilman Fink. You know, that might have been something Central Services had when you were discussing the procurement regs.
We did have that discussion on the charter amendment. I don't remember off the top of my head as far as the cost. Central Service is not here to...
Was it large or was it insignificant? Was it?
There was a cost associated with it. I don't remember the number.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any further, any further thoughts? Any further discussion? If not, Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll on Amendment Number 8?
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 8 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Bill Number 9517 as amended then will be heard on February 5th, 2018. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 9217 as amended.
Bill Number 9217 is amended, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate Public Facilities, Public Schools.
Thank you. Mr. Grasso?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pretty much, I think everybody knows my feelings on things, so I have nothing else to add, and it's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just since the legislation was significantly amended during the last meeting, as the sponsor, Mr. Chair, or Mr. Grasso, could you just say on the record whether you intend to support the bill?
Yes.
In this current posture?
Yeah, I agree to support the bill in its current posture. I'm fine with it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any, Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, County Executive's Office with me, Phil Hager in Plainzoni, Lori Blair Klosmeyer, attorney of law, County Executive supportive of the bill.
Are there any, any discussion, any further questions? If not, we'll open the public hearing with the remarks limited to two minutes. We have one person signed up, I believe. Thank you. Thank you for coming down tonight, sir. Good evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate this opportunity. My name is Jim Lyons. I live at 1403 East Central Avenue, Edgewater, Maryland. That's on the Mayo Peninsula. I don't want to address the specifics of the bill tonight. I want to address this larger concept that's embedded in the bill, and that's the issue of adequate public facilities. We recognize, or I hope all we recognize, that their adequateness is no more in this context. Adequate means sufficient or good enough. In essence, what it requires the developers is the minimum necessary to offset the impacts of development. But I'd suggest to you that anyone who's driven on 97 or Route 2 or Forest Drive to rush hour knows that our facilities are hardly adequate, and we need dramatic improvement. Our waterways remain polluted because our stormwater facilities are inadequate. We simply must do better than adequate if we're to guide future development and maintain the quality of life in this county. I'm afraid that adequate facilities really just addresses the needs of developers and minimizes their costs and expense, oftentimes at the expense of improving our roads, our schools, and our infrastructure. At what point do we get past this minimum standard and actually start to think about how we're going to improve the quality of life and infrastructure? General development planning processes, Mr. Hager is running, is supposed to be the place that, in fact, that will happen, but I think we all recognize and hope council would confirm the fact that the GDP is only guidance. It is not a mandate and doesn't require that it be complied with. In fact, ultimately, the council will decide what the future development will be. That GDP process will help bring people together, but it won't solve this problem of inadequate I simply want to suggest, Mr. Chairman, that it's important that we focus on a vision for the future that gets us beyond adequate, because between now and the time the GDP is completed, many more developments will occur, meeting only that adequate standard, and the improvements that we need in the county will be lacking.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Appreciate your, appreciate your comments. Is there anyone who did not sign up and wishes to speak? Mr. Platt. I was about to say seeing no movement, but then I saw some. Good evening, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, David Platt. I'm a Lanys attorney, also have been served on the chamber, even though I'm not speaking for the chamber, and various other land trusts and organizations. I did have a chance to testify. Mr. Trumbauer was there at the GDP. It was one of the listening sessions that the council has held, or the planning and zoning has held, and it's really important, and I think it's really been great that the administration and Mr. Hager and his whole team has been holding these sessions. But what's important is that if, whatever vision we come up for the county in terms of areas we want to develop, areas that we want to preserve, the implementation is really key to achieving that. And yes, we want to have adequate public facilities, but we want to be able to implement our plans and our visions of where growth should occur and where growth should not occur. In order to accomplish that, the adequate facility requirements, the expenditure of impact fees, the expenditure of capital funds to make improvements needs to match and further the vision. What doesn't make sense is to have an adequate public facility regulation for schools when 75% of the priority funding areas, the areas designated for growth in this county, cannot pass the test. Where the town center, we have three town centers, a parole town center, growth management area, except for the core, you cannot do residential or mixed-use development because it will not pass the test. So we need to be able to plan appropriately, and you need to be able to fund and implement regulations that will further the visions and further the goals of the plan, and that's not being done right now. And unfortunately, this bill actually goes backwards by reducing capacity, even though, as we know, system-wide, the schools are only at about 85% of capacity. So it's really a mismatch of capacity in terms of some schools are overcapacity, some are under. So I'm hoping that as the GDP goes forward and implementation, that this, this is going to be focused on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Platt. Appreciate that. Anybody else who wants to testify seeing no movement? We'll now close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 9217 as amended.
Bill Number 9217 is amended, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate Public Facilities, Public Schools.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hager, would you mind coming forward just for a minute? I have a question for you. Sorry to put you on the spot. Do you happen to have a copy of the bill with you? If not, maybe Madam Secretary could share?
I do not. It's back to my chair.
I'll need it back.
I'll give it right back.
Okay. The question is mostly related to one of the amendments that passed at the last meeting, and I think the page number is 3, and the line number is 27 and 28. And I would just like, on the record, since it's an administration amendment, for you to just maybe clarify for the record what, what, what is meant by the, the term, or adequate security for completion of the capital improvements is provided by the developer? What exactly does that entail, and how do you see that?
Typically, that would be a legally executed public facilities, public works agreement or bonding, preferably bonding.
Okay. So, so this, this sentence, the question has come from one of my constituents, is why I'm asking, so I apologize. He puts in the comment to me that this, this little sentence seems to allow the developer to immediately get on the six-year timer without having to help fix the issue. Does that...
I don't read it that way.
Okay.
I don't see how that's...
How do you?
Let me look at it again to see if it could be perhaps interpreted differently.
Okay.
One moment.
One moment.
No problem.
No, I don't see that because if, if, for example, the, if, if something is to be provided by the developer as part of this process and that developer were to renege, would go have a business failure and become bankrupt, or in some other way not be able to move forward with their obligation, there would be an opportunity for the county to cash that bond and execute and complete the work on that project.
Okay. All right, thank you. That was the only question, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Anybody else? If there's no further discussion, Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll on Bill 9217 as amended?
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill Number 9217 as amended is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 100-17.
Bill Number 117, an ordinance concerning Shoreham Beach Special Community Benefit District.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Council, Bernie Marzick, County Executive's Office with me at the table, Tomi Abubu from the Budget Office, Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. Bill 117 modifies the purpose of the Shoreham Beach SCBD to include shore erosion control, acquisition, and improvement of community properties, including boat ramps and piers. Shoreham Beach SCBD is located in Mayo, which is in Council District 7. We'd ask for your support of this bill.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any questions?
I support the bill.
Thank you. Good evening. Now, we'll now open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to? Seeing no movement in the crowd, so we'll now close the public hearing for Bill Number 100-17. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 100-17.
Bill Number 117, an ordinance concerning Shoreham Beach Special Community Benefit District.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 117.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 117 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill 10117.
Bill Number 10117, an ordinance concerning zoning commercial recreational facilities.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Council, Bernie Marzick, in the County Executive's Office with me at the table, Phil Hager, Planning and Zoning Officer, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. Bill 10117 adds commercial recreational facilities such as mini-golf, drive ranges, bowling alleys, or skating rinks as permitted uses in W1 zoning district. Presently, there is an anomaly in the code where that, these facilities are permitted in the commercial districts and W2, which is the heavy industrial district, but not in W1, which is the light industrial. Planning and Zoning does not believe there's any logical reason why they should not be in W1. In addition, there is an existing commercial recreational facility, the ice skating rink in Pine Orchard, that is interested in expanding. When it was constructed, it was legally conforming use, but since that time, the property was rezoned and expansion of that facility is now prohibited. This would allow that to move forward, and we'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Pruski, I'm assuming you're okay with this in your district? Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Chair?